Mayor Satterth Wait.
Here we have a quorum. The first item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
A motion, a second. Any discussion, additions or corrections? Yes, Ms. Wyman.
Just a couple typos, just for the record. On page four, third paragraph from the bottom, the paragraph begins economic development manager John Reggitts read proclamation from the Department of Agriculture, Office of the Secretary commemorating national farmers. There should be inserted after Farmers Market Week, August 1 through 7, 2004. And page eight, last line, it reports five voting "aye" rather than six, so just to correct it as six. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, any other additions or corrections? Not any discussion? There's no discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Additions or corrections to the agenda? I've got a couple. Notice Mr. Otto is not here this evening. He just called the clerk's office a few moments ago and informed them the close high school friend of his passed away and he's dealing with that situation and has asked that item A, under the committee, the report, the ordinance regarding employee ethics and political activity be postponed for two weeks. Is there any objection to honoring that request?
No.
Okay. And you'll see on the agenda that staff is requesting a two-week postponement on item D, the home consortium agreement. Is there any objection to that? Okay, we'll see both of those in two weeks then. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Okay, if not, we'll go to petitions and communications. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes, fill out one of these white cards at the back and bring it up to me or the clerk and you'll have the chance to do so. Before we get started with these though, we have a presentation to make. As you know, our sweet corn festival is coming up in less than two weeks' time and we had a promotional, a promotional sweet corn eating contest over the weekend, of which I and Chief Adair, among others, were participants, but we were all outshined by the champion sweet corn eater. Ms. Wyman was there and in a multi-round competition, in fact, went to sudden death. And she, after two rounds, in a sudden death round, she was the victor in the sweet corn eating contest. And I know she got many valuable prizes at the time, but we have another prize for her. And so she, our resident cornhead for being like the sweet corn eating champion.
Well, I have many hidden talents and now another has been discovered.
That's a talent that's not hidden anymore.
Thank you.
Well, first, we have Joe Petrie and Ray Timponi Jr. Ray Timponi Sr. is here as well. They're going to make a presentation on the Stratford Project. This is at, I think it's 106 North Race Street. And so they have a proposal for a TIF development and they've got a PowerPoint presentation. Who's gonna kick that off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here with you. We're very excited about what we're going to talk to you about tonight. I know we've only got five minutes, so we'll be brief. We are proposing and would like to get your support on a $5 million, 53,000 square foot project, new construction, brick and limestone building at the corner of Race and Water Streets in downtown Urbana. Want to walk you through that briefly. First of all, let me introduce the rest of our team. We have Ray Timponi Jr. I'm Joe Petrie. We also have Ray Timponi Sr. and Andrew Fell and a number of other important partners that aren't here tonight, but our friends Marion Pankow, in particular, Bucy Bank, has been particularly helpful, as well as the rest of the Bucy team. Pat Fitzgerald will be helping us on the legal side and Ramshaw Realty will be helping us to rent out the units and to lease the commercial space. It takes a lot of things for these kinds of things, this kind of development, to come to fruition. And we're of the belief that these things are beginning to happen at this point in downtown Urbana. And I guess the things that I would point out are, first of all, and to your credit, the city of Urbana, the city staff and the city council have been extremely supportive. And I can't stress you enough the importance of that consistency over time that observers such as myself and Ray Timponi have seen. And that has made believers out of us and we look forward to seeing a lot of good things for downtown Urbana. Certainly, so certainly the vision and leadership of the council. And we've had the great pleasure to work with Bruce Walden, John Reggitts, Libby and a number of other people, Rob and, I'm gonna forget some people, Ryan, were all very helpful in helping us get this project off the ground and in front of you to take a look at. The, in addition to your own leadership, we think actually, and we're gonna play off some of the successes in our neighboring city of Champaign, they've had some successes. They also have some issues that have come up. For better or for worse, there's a reputation in Champaign, downtown Champaign, of kind of a bar scene. There is a need and a strong desire to have an alternative to that. The congestion downtown Urbana is also an issue. The reputation that Urbana has of being very inclusive of the terrific history we have here and the openness to a variety of different viewpoints is very, very important to us. What we see as kind of the niche for downtown Urbana and for Urbana more generally that we want to play to really would include, first of all, restaurants, which, as you know, most of the best restaurants in the community are located in Urbana, many of them in downtown Urbana. That is clearly already a leadership position. A lot of high-tech firms, and sometimes you don't even realize it, as somebody from outside of Urbana may not even recognize just how many high-tech firms are already located in downtown Urbana. That would include firms like OJC, Volo, a number of other firms that are located in the downtown. In addition, it's a very strong artist-friendly component. So if I were Richard Florida and if I were looking for a community to model his idea of what a good community is, I would pick Urbana, Illinois. We think that's a great opportunity, offers a great opportunity for a luxury apartment and office complex. We are proposing a 53,000 square foot new building, would be brick and limestone. There would be a combination of apartments and office. We would have 41 luxury apartments, most of those two-bedroom, smattering of those one-bedroom, all upscale, in addition to some office space on the first floor. And with that office space, right now, we've got a lot at 3,700 square feet. That might increase a little bit. In any case, what we're targeting there is a high-tech firm, which we already have some leads on, who are, a number of firms have approached us actually and are interested in locating downtown Urbana, so we're discussing that with them. We're also gonna have secure onsite parking, 68 spots for that. We would begin, with your permission, we will begin this project immediately. We would have our architecture team and other components of the team effectively start full-time tomorrow morning. Once you give us the go-ahead, we would expect to break ground October 1st. The objective would be to have this ready for occupancy August 1st of next year. That is, as I mentioned, just about $5 million. The actual project size would be 4.65 million is our current estimate. This is the west elevation of the proposed building. You are looking at it from Race Street. In the far-right corner, that would be fronting Water Street. In fact, you see there, there's three stories above grade. The first story there would be where we'd have the office component. See if I can use this thing. So in here would be the office component. The remainder of this area here would be your entryway to the apartments. You'd have the elevator core there. This is the first floor. So again, here is the office component. This is the 3,700 square feet for office. You see the nice frontage, which perhaps you could have seen just as easily in the previous slide. That's a nice metal awning there. So you're looking down at this and you're seeing, on that floor, you're gonna see all two-bedroom, all two-bedroom apartments. Here's your elevator core, your double-entry doors, mailroom, et cetera. This is just upper floors, three and four. They're virtually gonna be identical. We have a number of one-bedroom apartments over on this side and one-bedroom here, otherwise it's two-bedroom apartments. This is a typical floor plan. We're not, we're not gonna scrunch people into these apartments. We've looked at other apartments available in downtown Urbana and downtown Champaign and we've scaled them up from there, both in quality and in size. This is 850 square feet, an example of a typical two-bedroom. Things that are gonna be included here that you might not expect in some apartments gonna be ceramic tile, full-size washer and dryer included, oversized windows, nice amenities. We hope and we expect that this will be the first phase of a multi-phase project. We would like to, upon successful completion of Phase 1, talk with you about going on to Phase 2 and 3. I've outlined that very briefly and I'll show you a diagram with the basics of those two phases in just a second. Be a combination, again, of residential and office. Phase 2 would be a four-story residential building just to the north of the site that we're looking at now, and I'll point that out in a second. That would be 24 units, 24,600 square feet. And then just to the east, which would be, I guess, just north of the Jolly Roger, we would do Phase 3. That would be a combine, combined three floors of residential and office. First floor would be office and then two floors above that would be residential. So here's the, here's Phase 1. So this is the building that I showed you the elevation of initially. Notice its, its southernmost edge there is on Water Street. It extends north along Race Street. So you've got the, the office down, down here at this, this corner and then apartments in the remainder. We've tried to hide the parking to the greatest extent possible. It's behind the building. We have secure gates at both entrances. So that, that's Phase 1. And just for context, here's the Jolly Roger restaurant right here. This, then, going north would be Phase 2. Again, that's in the neighborhood of, and I'm estimating here, about $2.8 million project residential. This is the boneyard right here, and in fact, that's one important aspect of something that we really want to work with the city council on, and that is turning that, that area into a nice amenity. It has a great deal of potential and we'd love to see it. That, that then is project, or pardon me, is Phase 2. And then Phase 3 is right along here. Mayor, you may recognize this location. This is Todd and John's Restaurant. And then this would be that new building along with an existing building that we would build on top of. And that would be Phase 3. And we're open for whatever questions you might have.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Ms. Wyman.
Some of the office space that you've identified, if someone wanted to turn that or use it during, well, if someone would like to use that for business, for retail, is that, is that something that would be compatible?
Sure. We'd love that. That is either office or retail.
Okay. And one other question about the residential component. Are any of those units planned to be accessible? I noticed you've got some stairs and I'm wondering if there are entrances that so people with mobility impairments would be able to enter and exit.
Sure. If we went back to the early diagrams, you'd see that there's an accessibility ADA accessible area here into the commercial and then down on this end, it's all completely ADA accessible.
And so how many of the apartments or what percentage would be accessible?
Essentially, all of them.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, well, this will come up later in the agenda and of course, we'll look forward to the discussion then. And if you guys wanna answer any questions at that time too, feel free.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Wyman?
Yeah, Ray, hi. Jim, can you tell me, who did you work with on staff and within the administration to come up to this point?
We worked with Bruce and with Rob and with Libby and a lot of the economic development team. John was important and we've, you know, we've been in direct contact with the mayor.
Oh, that's certainly wonderful. That's the kind of thing we need.
We need to bring business to downtown Urbana. And we're two guys that believe in downtown Urbana. We think that there is a lot of amenities in downtown Urbana. The new library, the post office in downtown, the grocery stores that are available down there, the bus lines. So we believe in Urbana and we think there's a lot of potential down there. We need to bring some business. We think this'll get it jump-started.
I appreciate the answer. This is a different kind of city and we can all be very proud of it.
We've been very impressed and very pleased with cooperation.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no more questions, thanks for the presentation. It looks exciting and we'll get to it later on in the agenda. Next is Curtis Pettijohn, 907 South Orchard, on the MOR, Mixed Office Residential Guidelines for the Designer Award.
Good evening. It's been, I guess, about a year since the ball started rolling on the MOR district. A lot of people came to the council with concern initially. City staff has been working many, many hours on this. The guidelines, I feel, that have been created are wonderful, but I have grave concerns at this point that the enforcement of the guidelines is not there. The, taking away of the enforcement and offering them as suggestions, to me, is like training a guard dog and then removing its teeth and hoping that your place will be safe. I, at this point, am maybe unclear as to how we're going to proceed with this, but I'm hopeful that the guidelines will be put in place and will be put in place that they have to be adhered to, not simply offered as some sort of menu. And my feeling is, is if they're not enforced, if they're not put in place and enforced, that we truly have spent a lot of time for possibly not much effect. And so I ask that you truly consider that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
I don't wanna make this meeting too long because I know we're already, it's already gonna run pretty long, but I was just wondering if you could answer, are there specific issues that you want to make sure are made mandatory rather than just strongly recommended or recommended?
Entrances concern me. As we saw with the property that's been developed by Dave Barr, which is finished at this point, the initial design that came forward had no entrances on Green Street. And that changed with city staff working with the developer. And I'm truly grateful that that happened because what we've ended up with is a beautiful building. But I can't believe that every developer is going to be as forthcoming. And I think that it makes a huge difference as to where the entrances are and the effect that it has on street life.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Alona Matkowski, 412 West Elm, on the MOR revisions.
Hi, I basically would like to repeat what Mr. Pettijohn has just said. I'm concerned that if these guidelines will be just recommendations and not requirements, not many developers will pay much attention to them because I'm afraid they will think that it's easier, maybe cheaper, to just go the way they want to go. And I'm afraid that without enforcing the guidelines or making them requirements, we can end up with very ugly buildings like we have been seeing built in the Moore District in the last 20 or 30 years. I would like to actually know more specifics about the changes that the planning board wants to make. What are those issues that they are, is it the entire pact, that package that we came up with or certain points of it?
Maybe I should have given you the option of speaking now or at the time of the, at the time of the agenda item, because you do have the option of speaking after you've heard the staff presentation.
Yeah.
And that might clear up some of your questions. Might prompt a few more questions, who knows? But would you like to do that? Would you like to wait until the agenda item comes up and then I can call you back again and, after the staff report?
Yeah, basically, I just would like to say what I already said, that I worry that this may not have any teeth if, they will be just recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Lester and Barb Pritchard, 601 West Pennsylvania. I guess, did you want to speak now or at the time of the agenda item? Speak now, okay.
I'm gonna repeat for Lester so we all understand. We're here tonight to talk about one aspect of the MOR district, the, the parking within the footprint of the building.
And this issue came up seven years ago and there was a big debate about whether to allow this citywide at that time.
This issue actually came up several years ago and there was a big debate whether or not to allow this citywide at that time.
First of all, let me distribute some photographs. It's been said that pictures speak a thousand words. I'm going to, I'm going to distribute these pictures to you.
First of all, let me distribute some pictures to you. I'm gonna have my assistant distribute some pictures. And it's been said that pictures speak a thousand words.
This picture is of two apartments and the garage above one of Green.
This picture, it's actually two different pictures of two apartments at the corner of Bucy and Green.
As you can see, there's two apartments and they're only two apartments in the ground level. They're adjacent to the parking garage.
As you can see, there are two apartments and only two apartments on the ground level and they're adjacent to the garage.
The one amenity is, you have the trash can is right next to the door.
The one amenity is that the trash can is right next to the door.
Barb and I have taken the opportunity to listen to the meetings of the planning commission and we were impressed that the planning commission went into great detail about the, about the appearance of the each of these facilities.
Barb and I took the opportunity to listen to the plan commission meeting and we were impressed by the great deal that, the great detail that the plan commission went into about looking at the facade of each of these, of each of the buildings.
The discussions were very thoughtful and very detailed.
The discussions were very thoughtful and very detailed.
The one element that was missing, however, was how these people, how these facilities would be used.
The one element that was missing, however, was how these facilities would be used.
People live in apartments.
People live in apartments.
Yeah, they should be designed around the functioning of people.
And they should be designed around the functioning of people.
People, whether they be black or white, gay or straight, disabled or able. I am, I'm victimized in 1997. You passed a revolution that will pass out. Now, the Reggitts, they stay up. The woke with the disability community should consider proposal to make the second floor of the apartment building acceptable. The parking garage by the ground floor needs to be used.
On September 8, 1997, you passed an agreement?
An ordinance.
An ordinance that directed the city staff to work with a disability community to make the, the, to make the second floor usable by people with disabilities when the ground floor is occupied partially by parking. And Lester, I don't think that was an exact quote, I'm sorry.
Yeah, good job.
And Lester just passed out that, that ordinance.
To our knowledge, no discussion has ever been, ever been put.
To our knowledge, no discussion between the staff and the disability community has never taken, has ever taken place.
What you're proposing, I didn't consider discussing the issue in more detail with the disability community and seeing if there's a way to make, make both sides come to agreement on the issue.
What I'm proposing tonight is that you take more time and discuss this issue between the, with the disability community and come to an agreement that will work for both sides on this issue.
Barb and I talked with Mr. Otto, this past weekend. He told us so many, apartment owners who are building new facilities are putting in owners who are building new facilities are putting in elevators because they command the higher rate.
Barb and I talked with Mr. Otto this week, and he told us that many developers are putting in elevators, um, many times because they demand a higher rate. And if I can add, these were elevators in buildings that didn't, the law didn't require elevators, because he said that was an added amenity.
The second thing that we are proposing is that you consider developing a plan to increase accessible, uh, uh, housing in Urbana.
The second thing we are proposing is that you consider developing a plan that would increase accessible housing in Urbana.
That way, we won't have to be coming forward and discussing each item bit by bit, that there will be overall plan that we can go by.
That way, we won't have to be coming forward to you and discussing each item bit by bit, there will be an overall plan that we could all go by.
And that's all I have to say, thank you.
And Lester said that's basically all I have to say, thank you. And I have no more comments either, thank you.
Okay, any questions on the panel?
Thank you. I just have one. Do you know the locations of any of these buildings that have elevators that don't need them?
Uh, Mr. Wakeland, um, was the one who made the comment to Milton.
Mr. Wakeland was the one that made the comment to Milton?
I believe he was on the side street by the old...
You believe it was on the side street by the old?
Uh, uh.
Food bank, by the, the one by the food bank that he built?
Yeah, Mr. says yes, by the food bank.
But I don't know.
But I know, but I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Wyman?
Just in response to that, I, the new building that Wakeland's building is on the same street that, where I live, and so I go by it a couple of times a week. I haven't noticed anything that shows any sort of elevator on it, although it's still under development. So if you talk with them again, and someone, and they, they said that there are going to be elevators, I'd be interested in finding out, because I'm not aware of any, Ms. Pat and I were talking, I don't think we're aware of any landlords or any properties that are putting in elevators that aren't, that don't require. So it'd be interesting to find out if that's, if that's fact or fiction.
You're getting, taking the knowledge.
Lester said you're getting second half knowledge here.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. And Lester, we'd like to congratulate you on your appointment to the state board that you've just agreed to join, and I want to thank you also in person for the many years you served on the Human Relations Commission. So thanks for all your involvement.
Thank you very much. Um, it will indeed be a challenge, but, um, the opportunity that the mayor and the city have afforded me over the past eighteen years has given me a good, a good base to operate from.
Lester said, thank you. It'll definitely be a challenge, but the city and the mayor have given me a good opportunity for the past eighteen years with a good base to operate from.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Next, we have Steve Ross at 609 West Green on the topic of the MOR.
Good evening. My name is Steve Ross, I'm, as the mayor said, at 609 West Green. I'm sure you all know that there were two components in the change to the MOR. The first one was a, a change in the membership, the composition of the Development Review Board, going from city staff to citizen and, and resident membership. And I'd just like to thank the mayor for his recommendations, based on the three people that I know, Mr. Zangler, Ms. Gachau, and Mr. Adams, I think those are wonderful recommendations. The other aspect was, is the design guidelines, that's been the focus of other comments tonight, and it's also the focus of my brief comments. I think the city staff has done a great job in, in putting these together. And I know there's people that have said that it can't be done, but I think as I read through them, it can be done. And I'm hopeful that we can, can show it in action. My only concern tonight is that any project that is built in the MOR, I hope will substantially satisfy the requirements of the, the design guidelines. I think the Development Review Board needs some concrete goals by which to evaluate a proposed project, so that we ensure that it meets all the major requirements, which are noted as strongly encouraged in the design guidelines, and at least a substantial subset of the minor requirements. I can think of one major requirement that I wish had been in place a year ago, when 605 West Green, my neighbor, when that project was approved, because that project does not have an entrance on the front, so all the traffic, all the foot traffic will be from the parking lot in the back, down the side of the building, but next to my house, up an external stairway, and, and then into the apartments, which is, all this action is taking place in front of my twelve-year-old daughter's bedroom, so I'm not really excited about that project. I think if it had a front door, we would, and a back door, we would, we could avoid that sort of thing, much as Mr. Barr has done at 611 West Green. And speaking of Mr. Barr, he has appeared, I think it was before the Development Review Board, and said that he would like to know in concrete terms what he needs to do. And that would have saved him some time and effort. And I think we can help him and the members of the Development Review Board by being very clear on, on what requirements need to be met for any project in the MOR district. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Ross? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other petitions or communications from members of the public? Gabe, do you want to fill out a card, or?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. You can fill that out, Gabe, after you're done. Just go ahead.
Well, um, Gabe Omosagi, 2409 North High Cross. Just once again, trying to talk about the petition drive and things like that, to try to at least get two at-large members on the council. I don't know why majority of the council are opposed to it. It's citywide. I'm tired of reading about it in the papers and people saying that it's, makes, it would not make room for minorities. I don't know what that means. All minorities don't have this, the same point of view. You know, I would, you know, I mean, I don't know what they're afraid of. Let the petition drive go forward, and let's have the election, and let's see what happens. I think that, you know, from my point of view, the council needs a lot of help. I mean, like I said before, you know, you have four people who always vote the same way, and unfortunately, Jim Hayes joined them to override the mayor's veto the last time. I don't understand, I don't know why. Maybe you, you can explain it to me. Every time I come in here, I know that, for some reason, people just stare at me, and I wonder if it's that you're not sure whether I know what I'm talking about, or you're afraid of arguments. You know, I think, you know, I love fierce contentions, and I would love to debate anybody on these subjects. You know, I'm tired of people hiding behind the idea that they are for minorities, you know? Just forget that. You're not for, you know, I don't think that you are more sensitive to minorities than the mayor is, you know? And for some reason, at least I respect the mayor's position a lot better than most of the other people on the council, in the sense that at least the mayor has done something else before becoming a politician. You know, he's run a business, at least, you know? That's, to me, you know, when you, before you start making laws for everybody to follow, you must at least have lived in the real world, you know? Have an idea about it. You know, I remember, I think it was Herbert Humphrey, who long ago said, when he, when he got out into the real world and bought some hotels, you know, and then finally, the hotels went under. And then he said, you know, you know what put those hotels under? The laws that I passed when I was in Congress, you know? He said, if I had known what I know now, I would not have passed those laws. And the same thing, you know, with the people who have spent all their time and all their lives being activists, you're sitting there and telling us what's good for the majority of the people without having any idea as to what's the, way in the real world I have to put up with. So, of course, let the election go, they have over a thousand signatures right now. Don't fight it. I'm sure it's going to be a Democrat. You know, you say it will be, you know, what would happen is that the Democrat would be in the pockets of big business. Don't make me laugh, what big business in Urbana? You know? Look, you know, let it go forward, let's see what happens. You know, we need some new ideas, you know? I guess you are progressives, let's get some new ideas. Thank you.
Questions?
There will be no questions, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Gabe, if you want to fill out your card and then give it to Phyllis. Any other petitions and communications from members of the public, from council members? Yes, Mr. Wayman?
To follow Steve and his appeal, I would just say, it would seem to me to be wise. I have learned a lot from you folks, and that's, we have different opinions, but I have certainly learned quite a bit from your generosity and your thoughtfulness and interest in minorities. And, and I thank God for that, because that's where I came from when I graduated from college. But I must say, I think it would be wiser for this council to get behind this drive for a larger council, and say, you know, maybe they've got an idea here, and get behind it so that the, it doesn't look like this is such a great contrast. And so I would urge you to give this some thought, and perhaps in the next time that we have to speak to the public, say, you know, I think they're right, I think we do need more open-mindedness here. And that certainly, we, we all recognize the criticism of political power, and that is some, perceived by some to be a valid criticism. But at the same time, you know, what does being liberal mean? Being liberal means being open-minded and willing to consider different ideas. And I think, I think that that would be a great feather in the cap of our, not an endangered species, mind you, but in the feather of, cap of our seeming majority on the city council. Say, let's get behind this, why, golly, this is, this makes some sense. We're with it, and you know that the possibility and the probability of having a Democrat elected is quite feasible. So, you know, look good in the eyes of the public here. Don't look like you're trying to just hold on to some small bit of power.
Okay, thank you. Any other petitions and communications from council members? Okay, um, yes, Mr. Hayes?
I just want to announce that Thursday, August 19th, there's going to be an Eaze at Lincoln, a celebration from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And it'll take place on the corner of Eaze and Gregory Street. And also, they're going to talk about people who are interested in buying homes, so you can get the information at this particular time. So Thursday, August 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hayes. Next, we have reports from the standing committee, committee of the whole, since there's no old business.
Thank you. Starting with item 1A has been sent to the September 7th council meeting, so go to item B, council members, we found a memoir packet dated August 13th, which is the summary of all that was included in the decision at committee, but there are some blanks left in the ordinance that I'm about to move. Ordinance number 2004-060068, an ordinance amending the City of Urbana Code of Ordinances, curfew for minors, for the committee, I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, because there were some blanks left by, by Mr. Holt, so the council could fill it in as, as we saw fit, which I appreciate, I'd like to now move these changes on page three of the strikeout version, item E, maximum fine for violation of this section shall be $75, if I understand that correctly, to be after an accumulation of, of several violations. And under section two, directly under that violation, section 15 dash 63A violations by minors, first offense, 25, second offense, 50, third offense, 75, and the same repeat for the item below that, violations by parents, guardians, et cetera. And as I understand, that to be a maximum, so up to those figures of 25, 50, and 75. And then also, I'd like to move a type, just a correction of a typo on page two at the bottom of the page, item five, strike out the words "the juveniles," so it reads simply number five is homeless. That just corrects a linguistic error. Thank you. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Chandler?
The motion on the floor is the, to amend the, the motion, is that correct? I'll, I'll hold off my, my comments at this point.
So the effect of this would be actually to leave the first offense the same as it is right now, leave the second offense the same as it is right now, and to lower the amount for the third offense, which is currently a minimum of 100 and maximum of 200, to between 50 and 75, is that, am I reading that right? Is that what the effect of this would be, Mr. Holt?
Okay.
That's how I heard it. It's not, it's not my recommendation, that's Ms. Wyman's recommendation.
Right, but I was...
Mine is hit blanks.
Is that your intent, is to lower the curfew, third offense?
Yes, and, and actually, if I could clarify, so that the first, second, and third offenses up to, the 25, up to the 50, up to the 75, not putting a, a basement, if you will, on that? Does that make sense? Unless it's not possible.
I'm not following.
So violation by minor, up to $25 for a first offense, up to $50 for a second offense, up to $75 for a third offense?
Well, the difficulty is, if you want to have it in the pay-by-mail schedule, it has to have a fixed amount.
Okay.
Can't be arranged.
Okay, thank you for that. Then I'll change it to just the straight-out $25, 50, and $75 figures. And that's, I'd like to clarify, that is the motion.
Okay, so these are not arranged, and currently, Mr. Holt, it's at 25, 50, and 100, is that what the third is? Or is there a pay-by-mail for the third?
For, for all offenses, the pay-by-mail amount for curfew is $50 flat, regardless of first, second, or... of first, second, or third offense, regardless of whether it's a juvenile or the adult responsible for the juvenile who's committed the offense, is simply $50. That, the confusion here goes back to the points that I made in my previous memo on this thing, which is that there's these, there's these kind of overlapping, somewhat contradictory fine provisions relating to the curfew ordinance. There's the pay-by-mail fine, which I think formerly was $75 minimum, is now $50 minimum. And then there's also language in there, in the ordinance itself, about this, these escalating series of minimums. Technically, they don't, they don't contradict each other because one said as pay-by-mail, the other said as if you're in court. But I think it's extremely confusing for everybody. Nobody can read that and really understand it. So I'm suggesting as part of this process that we just tidy that up, we get rid of the, the apparently conflicting provisions and just, and just set some numbers and be happy with them.
Okay, so that's what we're doing here, 25, 50, 75? Okay, is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
I should make sure I understand just the, because we've got differences in violations by minors as opposed to violations by parents, is it possible or would, in a circumstance, would both a minor and that minor's parent or guardian be fined for the same offense of, of being, of a minor being out past curfew?
It's possible. I can't remember it happening in recent times, but it certainly is possible.
And how would that happen?
If the minor's out and the parent doesn't care, basically, what it comes down to.
So the, if I understand the scenario correctly, the minor is, is caught out past curfew, the police contact the parent or guardian, and the parent or guardian then says, when, when they're asked by the, the police officer, did you know that your child is, is out and it's past curfew? And the parent says, no, I didn't, and I don't care?
Yeah, or yes, I did, and I don't care. I knew, but I don't care.
Okay. And it, and a time when, when a juvenile, a minor would be violating ordinance and the guardian or parent would not, would be, no, I didn't know the, the minor was out. Thank you for telling me, please bring the minor home? And then that's only an offense by a minor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Yes, Mr. Whalen?
In my widely designed ward, I have noticed, or have been brought to my attention certainly, a couple who had a child who had stayed out late and wouldn't come home. And when that child did come home, his father got into a face-off with him and the kid punched the father. And the kid had his friend there with him who used, was used as a witness to the fact that the father pushed the kid, his son. And so he was, the father was arrested. There is a breakdown here of parental control. I think that, I understand there is a Supreme Court decision that affects this, this ordinance. But I find the, the whole idea of parental control being lessened to be very upsetting to me. And in this town, I would think that we need more of that kind of parental control. And so I plan to vote against this.
Any further discussion?
I, I think I misunderstood Mr. Whalen. If you could, I don't mean to take it more time, but you say you don't think there's enough parental control, so you're going to vote against an ordinance that requires curfew? Or you're, you're opposed to the lowering of the-
I'm opposed to the liberal, not, I won't use the word liberal because I respect it much too much, but the lackadaisical appreciation of the fines being lessened.
Okay, thank you.
And it reflects an attitude that I think is unhealthy.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this amendment? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I'll make a roll call.
Mr. Whalen's asked for a roll call. Ms. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're back to the main motion, which is the curfew, amending the curfew ordinance. Ms. Chenoweth?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make the motion to delete under C2, the phrase, a very simple change, delete the phrase "without any detour or stop."
Second?
I'm sorry, it's on page two, about halfway down.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, I, I have concerns actually about the entire ordinance, but in particular, I think that if there's subjectivity involved in the ordinance, the subjectivity should be in the hands of the parents, not the, our police department. So to say that, to make it put on, on police officers the onus that they must, they must decide whether or not a person pausing on the street, gassing up at the gas station, et cetera, is a detour or stop, I think is not, it, it just opens up a lot of loopholes. I think that, you know, what I see in this ordinance is that basically it's asking, you know, do you have your parents' permission? Are you involved in an activity where you have a parent's permission? And there's a list of things that could be eligible activities, but last week, we added any activity. So really, that's, you know, you are, you can be legally out past curfew if you have the permission of your parents. Now, a police officer stops a minor, asks that person, a, a stop somebody under the age of 16, asks that person, you know, where are you going? What are you doing? The person says, you know, I went to the art theater and got out at 11 o'clock and it's past curfew, I'm going home. So the police officer could either at that point decide, okay, I believe this person, or they could say, I'm going to take you home and ask your parents. At that point, the parent could, you know, could then say, yes, this person had permission, and game over, kid is home. In this case, a police officer can make and ask, they can determine by looking at, at a child, is this person detouring, is, are they stopping? And based on that, they can decide that even if this person, this, this minor, so to speak, is doing something that is an eligible activity, that they have their parents' consent for, pausing, stopping, detouring, these are all very subjective things, in my opinion, leave it open to interpretation of the police as to decide that. I really think that that interpretation needs to be in the hands of parents. And then parents can say, yeah, I told them that they can go to the art theater and afterwards, you know, grab a biteed and come home, and grabbing the biteed is fine, or, you know, yeah, they're dropping off a friend, or they're gassing up, these were okay things to do. So I, you know, I think that the weakness of the ordinance is with the words "without any detour or stop." We, we get the same thing out of the ordinance without the, those lang, that language, in that, that the police can bring the child home and parents can say, yes, permission or no permission. And the police don't have to determine whether or not a pause or a stop was being committed, so to speak.
Any other discussion? Discussion, all those in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Whalen's asked for a roll call again.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
No.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Before us again is the main curfew ordinance. Any other discussion?
Thank you, just one point of clarification, a question for Mr. Holt. Do I understand correctly that if we were to pass this now, the next item C is not, does not require reaction because there is in fact no separate ordinance, 2004-08106?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have a question, though, maybe I wasn't, maybe I didn't hear earlier when the motions were made about the fine amounts. Was there a fine amount proposed for subparagraph E where I also have a blank?
Yes, uh huh, yeah, that was $75. That was part of that motion. Yeah. So the motion before you, you know, I didn't, is for the ordinance and? Any other discussion?
I just wanted to point out something regarding Mr. Whalen's comments about the lowering of the fines. I just, I think there needs to be a clarification. If you look at the memorandum, first page dated August 13, 2004, points out that, that the, in the pay, present pay-by-mail amounts that are for curfew violations, the first offense is $3 to 25, second offense, 25 to 50, third offense, 100 to 200. So in fact, if this ordinance passes, passes as it's been amended, there will actually be, actually be an increase in the first offense and second offense to the $25 and $50, rather than the $3 to 25 and 25 to 50 in the pay-by-mail amount. I don't know if that helps or confuses, but I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Whalen?
Ms. Wyman, I, I didn't object to it for that reason. That was, Mr. Holt's, I think, concern. But my concern is the whole issue of the curfew. I once took a child in to our house and he was, stayed out late and wouldn't obey the curfew that the law had set and that I had set. And it took some argument with the young man to get him to listen to that. And that's just one example. I think that our culture has taken away many, too many controls that parents would have, be it subjective or objective. Think that we need to reinforce that rather than demean it. And so I, I don't know what to say. I mean, except that I think that nine counsel would be a good idea here.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
I can't support this ordinance. Our old ordinance, the history of this, as I understand, is that our old ordinance may have been unconstitutional. Certainly in Indiana, there are some cases, and Mr. Holt has reviewed that. I think this ordinance is, is much better in terms of constitutionality. But, but I, I disagree with it in principle. I strongly feel, and this is perhaps a libertarian in me coming out, that families should determine how to conduct themselves, not government, and that families can determine and enforce whatever policies they may have on their own. And I think that those, in terms of the ways in which a parent, that I feel like in some ways, an ordinance like this isn't antiquated. So I feel as though, that, and the fact that whenever I see an ordinance that takes a category of people and severely restricts their ability to have free mobility, that, that, that frightens me on some level. That children in society are one of the categories of people who haven't organized themselves adequately enough to, in some ways, say, you know, we have certain rights and that we should assert those rights. And I don't, I don't think this is a necessary ordinance. I think it's government, that's the thing to it. I can't support it.
Is there further discussion on the main motion? Mr. Whalen?
There are, there's a lot of things that Ms. Chenoweth says that I would agree with, although I'm not a libertarian. But I do think that we should give parents more control, and parents should give themselves more control. And the breakdown of the family in this country today is a major problem. And so for that reason, I would object to this. However, saying that, I think that Mr. Holt has done a great job in, in putting this together for us, and I compliment him for that effort. And I do recognize the need for some kind of a curfew, which is, can result, that is, a lack of curfew can result in people being damaging to other people, and that's our function as a government. So I will oppose this at this time, however, not in principle totally, but because of the fines and also the notion that parents are, don't have the right and responsibility to take, to control their children.
Is there further discussion? Ms. Chenoweth?
I promise this will be my last comment, but I, I just wanted to urge council to understand that people are innocent until proven guilty. And when I hear statements like, we should have an ordinance that will possibly prevent kids from committing crimes, which is what I see this ordinance to be about, I think, why is it the kids doing something that doesn't hurt anyone, that isn't stealing from anybody? Why is that? How is it that we feel as though it is, it is constitutional and, and acknowledges and respects the right of law? How we could possibly think that preemptive arrest, which is what I consider an ordinance like this to be, preemptive arrest, isn't okay to treat anybody in this city? We do not, we, there are other ways to prevent crime besides preemptive arrest.
Is there further discussion?
Very briefly. Philosophically, I don't disagree with any of that. I, I think the main purpose of curfew laws that a lot of kids by the time they're 15 and 16 don't follow their parents' rules a lot. And a lot of parents of teenage kids would feel that they need curfew laws to back up their own curfew. And what gets their kids to come home on time is the fact that it's not, it's not just mom said so, but it's the law. And I, I also do think that, and I've heard from many parents of teenagers, they don't like when the law contradicts the parental judgment. And as I mentioned, we discussed as a committee, that probably most often arises on weeknights that are not school nights, because a very common practice is for parents to give different curfews for school nights and non-school nights. And the law distinguishes weeknights from weekends rather than school nights from not school nights. But overall, I think what we have here in this ordinance is a, something that we're told is constitutional and a backup for parents to enforce their own curfew without any severe penalty for people who are otherwise law-abiding but in violation of this law.
Is there further discussion? Just one quick comment, and, you know, I didn't think we were going to get into the merits of curfew ordinances in general, rather than just the tweaking this. I think the majority of people believe that curfew ordinances are a good thing for a community to have, not only to put some guidelines for the young people of our community, but to help protect the young people in our community. I think, I don't have the statistics in front of me, but I've seen them, and that when young people are out late at night, past curfew, they are overwhelmingly the victims of crimes. And when you see statistics like that, you can't ignore them as a community. And sure, it may infringe on people's freedom to a certain degree, but the benefits that are provided to the community as a whole far outweigh the infringement on the freedoms. And if, I mean, we as a society have agreed that those are things that we need to look at. The statistics show, for instance, that wearing your seatbelt cuts down on automobile injuries, injuries from automobile accidents. And so we have a law that we have to buckle your seatbelt. And it's common sense, laws like this, that sure, it infringes your freedom. I don't like to buckle my seatbelt. I grew up in an era where you didn't have to do it, and it's been, you know, a decades-long process for me to get used to it. I don't like it. But I do it when I remember, and I think it's, I think it's, I think it's good. I haven't quite gotten in the habit of doing it all the time, but I do, I've, I've told myself, I feel more secure- of doing it all the time, but I do, I've told myself, I feel more secure and I am safer when I do that, and there are good reasons, because you are safer and the chances of you getting into a serious injury are less when you do that, and the same is true with an ordinance like this, I mean, the statistics show that, that kids are often victims of crimes at, at late hours, and we as a society should recognize that, so I encourage your support.
Further discussion, Ms. Whelan?
Just one small point, one of the, I think the amendments that we made at last week's committee meeting included, if I can just point your attention to it, Ida, on page two, item G, an activity, there's not a violation of the curfew if it involves an activity approved by the minor's parent, legal guardian, or custodian, and I think that, that that helps to add, work as a catch-all in this ordinance, so that if the parent is, even if the parent isn't aware that the minor is out, but then finds out, the parent could simply state that they, that, that the, that the parent approved of the minor's activity, sure, but please bring the, bring the minor home, something like that, and deal with the minor, the, the curfew violation in their own home, in their own way, rather than allowing a fine to be, to be placed on the minor simply by agreeing when they've, when they've been contacted that, that that activity is approved, and I think that that helps to, again, enforce the parents, help, help parents enforce their own parental guidelines without bringing the city and, and the police into too much involvement that, that the parents wouldn't approve of in, in handling their own family affairs, so I'll be supporting this, thank you.
Any further discussion? Further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
No.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Huth? Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
No.
Ms. Whelan?
Yes.
That motion carries with four ayes, Ms. Pat, want to continue with the report from the committee, the whole?
Thank you, item C is removed because it's no longer necessary, item D was sent to our September seventh council meeting, and so we're on item one E, a resolution number 2004-08-018R, a resolution to impose a temporary moratorium on permitting outdoor advertising sign structures until an interim development ordinance can be adopted to impose a moratorium on outdoor advertising sign structures issuance, while the review of the number, placement, and development standards of outdoor advertising sign structures is being completed. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth.
I just have a quick question that came up between our last conversation and this one, which is, do we currently charge a, a, what would it be called, a permit fee for the construction of a, of a billboard? Do we know that? We do, and what's the, what's the level of that, of a permit fee, or where does it stand in relation to a permit fee to build something else, for example?
It's one of our sign permits, I can't, I have to go to my headquarters, but it's in our schedule fees.
Is it more expensive to have a permit to build, to build a billboard than to put a sign up, say, in front of a building, say, say you purchase a building and it's got, you know, it's mixed office residential or something, and it doesn't have a sign, and you go and you want to put a monumental, kind of monument sign up, you get, you have to get a permit for that sign, correct? What's the, is it more expensive to get a permit for a billboard?
It may not be, but I'm not sure, I'd have to look it up.
Okay.
It's a standard sign.
Okay, I, it's, it's not, because this is on the table, I raised the issue, it's not actually completely relevant to what's on the table today, but I think that in reviewing, we are thinking about this moratorium in an attempt to review our whole structure, and I think one of the things we might want to look at, at the very least, I mean, there's many things that we've discussed, is ways in which to, to, you know, there's a certain impact billboards have on a community, and I wonder if the fees either to rent or to build the billboard, I don't think there's a fee currently to rent, to us at least, that, that it perhaps would make sense for us to demonstrate the impact of billboards on our community in terms of the fees if we are to have billboards in the future, so I, I add that to the pot, you can stir it as we discuss this in the future.
Most of our billing fees are either just by type or by cost of construction, so we don't impose higher fees for more objectionable types of uses, but we do have things like landfills where there can be a very hefty fee, so that, that can be something we can look at.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
This question.
Yes, Mr. Whelan?
Let me, we've been talking about signs for the Sunny Crest area for over a couple of years, and I understand that there is a charge for some of these people to put up a sign, isn't that true?
It's a sign permit fee, it's, it's not a huge fee, again, I can't tell you without the schedule fees exactly what it is and if it's based on construction cost, but the real cost of sign construction is in the structure, they're very expensive, and I think, you know, the fee that we charge, whether it's fifty dollars or whatever, is a pretty minor part of that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? No other discussion, all those in favor of this resolution?
Roll call on this, please, and I will mention why, if you'd like, if you'd give me a chance. Okay, let me just take the opportunity to say that I, I can get Ms. Whelan's hair out of her eyes here, so, the, I, I really object to a lot of our signage laws, I don't think that we understand or appreciate the need for the communication by businesses to the public, and I have designed a couple of signs that won awards from the CCDC here in town, and, and pride myself in, in graphic design, and I, just because that's what I used to do for a living, but I think that our, our laws are too restrictive, and we will have to explore that when it comes to, they give a lift to the Sunny Crest area, I think they can be offensive, that are garish and, and over, you know, overloaded with information can cheapen an area, and I, I decry that, at the same time, I do not think, I think our, our ordinance is flawed, so I will vote against this.
Okay, any, any further discussion, Ms. Pat?
Thank you, it, at committee, we discussed that the, part of the motivation for this moratorium to further review number, placement, and development of, basically of billboards is, was complaints that we were receiving from Urbana business people that their own signage was being blocked by billboards, and new standards of the state allows for lower billboards, and there was an accident because of possibly related to blocking visibility of traffic, and to explore those issues that we would be initiating this moratorium.
Any further discussion?
Can I reply?
Yes, Mr. Whelan?
Sorry to, to burden you with this again, I, I agree, Ms. Pat, and that is a good reason, and however, I do think that it wouldn't hurt to let things go as they are, understanding that we can restrict them and when, once we, we bring a new ordinance into effect.
Any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by the saying, oh, Mr. Whelan asked for a roll call, Ms. Clark?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Huth? Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
No.
Ms. Whelan?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes, Ms. Pat?
Thank you, we're on item one F, ordinance number 2004-08-107, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four, article six of the Code of Ordinances, increasing the size of the Urbana Public Television Commission, for the committee, I so move.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Ms. Whelan?
I guess just a, a question, if it's the clerk or the mayor, or who's the one who then forward this information to the, to the library board to let them know, perhaps to ask them to put on their next agenda this issue for discussion or, or nominations?
Yeah, I can email Mr. Schliff and let him know that they've got an appointment, or they can, they can nominate.
Thank you.
Discussion, if not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Ms. Whelan?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes, Ms., several items under new business this evening, an ordinance, first is an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, Savannah Green subdivision phase six, plan case number nineteen oh four dash S dash oh four, Mr. Kowalski?
Thank you, not too much to report on this, this is the second to last phase for Savannah Green, the final plat for phase six would create twenty-nine lots and extend Oglethorpe Avenue and Rainbow View Drive, subdivision's near complete, you'll see phase seven at your next council meeting, and that would be it for Savannah Green, so, would recommend approval of the final plat, happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Kowalski?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Whelan?
Rob, are we going to have any, has the streetlight agreement that was arrived at by the mayor and by Mr. Walden and, and so many good people, that has been resolved?
It has been resolved, my understanding is the developer had agreed at the request of the city to put in the decorative street lighting as originally envisioned.
The people out there will be very happy to hear that, of course, as some of them do know already because they were very concerned about that.
Right.
And it's hard to know how you approach a private contract like that, but will this, in this new subdivision, expansion of the development, will that be continued, that same contributory?
Yes, for, for this phase of the development and the, and the last phase, which will be coming up, it's all part of the same development, they would have the same kind of streetlights that he's now agreed to put in.
That's great, I must say that, not many people really know how hard our mayor worked and our, our chief administrative officer and your department to bring these developers to an understanding where the people were concerned, and I played a very small role in that, but it took a number of us to, to get this done, and it, it frequently happens by the back door, and, so people should, I would say, be, you know, can, be proud of their, their city and it's working for their benefit, thank you, Rob.
Okay, any other discussion? There are no other questions, a motion would be in order?
Move approval?
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Aye.
Ms. Whelan?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes, next is an ordinance approving, approving a preliminary and final plat, this is for Prairie Wind subdivision, plan case number nineteen oh two dash S dash oh four, Mr. Kowalski?
This combination preliminary and final plat comes from the August fifth meeting of the Plan Commission, they unanimously recommended approval tonight, again, this is for the thirty-one acre development that Paul Tatman is building on what's commonly referred to as the Golladay Tract on south side of Colorado Avenue, east of Philo Road, the final plat would create twenty-nine single-family lots, one lot for the senior retirement center and one lot for the condominium planned unit development, that was approved as part of the annexation agreement last year, the plat, most importantly, would also extend Colorado Avenue and would create two local-level roads and a private drive for Prairie Wind Circle that would serve the condos, it has been sent to agencies for their review for utilities and easements, et cetera, and drainage has been preliminarily reviewed and approved, and again, the Plan Commission recommends approval of it, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I see that Bob Dean from Blank West Lincoln Cook is the project engineer, probably could answer some questions if you have any as well.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Kowalski? If there are no questions, a motion would be in order?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
I just want to thank staff and, and Paul Tatman for working together to alter what used to be a stubbed-off street and make it something that with new development could actually mesh with the surrounding areas, so if council members remember our last conversation about this, I believe Lucas, what is now Lucas Street, was going to be stubbed off and there was going to be a bike path, which does allow some kind of pedestrian throughput, but I know this council raised concerns about that, I know staff and Mr. Tatman worked on that, and I see in the preliminary plat that it actually is a street that is ready to go through with, you know, the existence of development to the, to the south there, so I really think that unlike a lot of communities that I've gone to where you can't really get through neighborhoods, one neighborhood into the next, they're all kind of their own gated community, so to speak, this really allows for kind of the open access that I think makes, makes cities great, and I'm glad to see that.
Any other discussion? There's no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Ms. Whelan?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes, next is an ordinance to correct a typographical error in ordinance number two thousand and four dash oh six dash oh seven eight, entitled an ordinance fixing a time and place for a public hearing in connection with a proposed supplement and amendment to the redevelopment plan and related redevelopment projects for the downtown Urbana tax increment redevelopment project area.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is basically just a little cleanup work, you know, earlier this summer, a hearing date was set for reviewing the TIF amendment for TIF I and supplement, and the date that was set was September seventh, two thousand and four, which is correct, however, the, the day was listed as a Monday, which ordinarily is when you meet, but that particular day because of the Labor Day weekend is a Tuesday, and that needs to be corrected as well as setting the, the meeting time for seven fifteen rather than seven thirty, so we just thought we'd clean that up.
Okay, any questions about that? No questions, motion would be in order?
Move approval?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Ms. Whelan?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes, next we have an ordinance requesting that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development grant exceptions for conflicts of interest of alterperson Laura Huth, I don't know exactly how we want to start with this.
Mayor, I think Mr. Walden passed you a note about that.
Yeah, I mean, this has been an ongoing item for a number of months, and Habitat for Humanity just delivered a letter late this afternoon to Mr. Walden indicating that they are withdrawing their request for funding, this would be CDBG and home funds and for lots to be dedicated to Habitat for Humanity, as I said, this came late this afternoon, I guess the supposition is that this may eliminate the conflict of interest, is that right, Mr. Walden, there's a chance that this might eliminate?
There's a possibility, we just need to have a look at the situation, now, the, the letter sets forth some, a change in the situation, a significant change in the situation, and that would certainly change the analysis of it, and we just need to take, take a little bit of time aside and have a look at it and see what it really does, we feel we also really ought to have a conversation with the HUD officials about it to make sure that they agree with our analysis of it, it, it does not necessarily mean that, that the conflict is gone, it's a possibility, but the conflict may still be there.
And the conflict is, of, where Ms. Huth, as a council member, is in a position to vote on funding from the home and CDBG and for an organization which she is now executive director, and HUD regulations- director, and HUD regulations and state regulations as well, or state statute as well, indicate that being in both of those positions where you would be receiving money for the organization would be a conflict of interest. Is that right?
That's essentially correct, yes.
So this may resolve that conflict of interest?
It could.
Okay, so we'll do some analysis on this and then if, bring it back if this doesn't clear up the conflict. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any objection then to moving on to the next item? And we'll bring this back if it's necessary if this particular action by Habitat doesn't clear up Ms. Huth's conflict of interest? Okay, there's no objection. All right, we'll go on to Item 5 under New Business, and that's an ordinance authorizing the chief administrative officer to execute an agreement between Ameren Corporation and the Cities of Champaign, Illinois and Urbana, Illinois concerning the acquisition of Illinois Power by Ameren. Mr. Holtz?
Thanks. Yeah, my memo spells this out pretty well. Essentially, we have intervened in the ICC proceeding with respect to the takeover of Illinois Power by Ameren, and in that context, we have negotiated a settlement agreement. The negotiation is for a total of $14 million to the cities, $6 million per year to be paid out, pardon me, not paid out, to be used to correct deficiencies, primarily those that would be identified by engineering audits, an additional $1 million per year to be spent with a little bit more discretion by the cities. In addition, they'll pay $50,000 towards our engineering fees. I think that essentially covers it.
Hey, are there any... Mr. Walden, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to disclose that those are, and towards future engineering, amounts of monies that we have invested in is probably 17, 18, just out that money, which we already did a budget amount of.
Now, is that our share or is that the...
That was our share.
That's our share.
Okay, and that's being matched in equal amounts by the University of Champaign. Is that right? So we spent a total of over 50,000.
We spent about half of the money that was allocated, so that's probably somewhere around...
50,000.
Around 50 out of 100.
Right.
So the funds for engineering are for our future engineering fees associated with the review audit.
The review audit, right. Any questions about this? Ms. Wyman?
Just have a few questions. I'll just go in order of the memo. On page 2 of the memo, where you talk about negotiation of a settlement agreement under audit, it says the major provisions, a major provision is an agreement by Ameren that if it acquires IP, it will conduct an audit of its electric transmission and distribution facilities. Is that an independent audit or they're gonna do it and tell us whether they're complying?
They would do it. The settlement agreement has laid out specific types of things that they look at, various types of protective devices. I think there's, you know, you're talking engineering here. None of us will understand it. We worked together with our engineering consultants to develop the parameters of the audit that would be performed, and our engineers are satisfied, that is, our consulting engineers are satisfied that this would provide us a lot of much-needed information about the reliability of the system and where it needs to be fixed up.
Okay. A couple other questions on the issues regarding expenditures, Item D on page 3 of the memo. A commitment to spend at least $6 million in each of the next two years following the close of the transaction. How much is spent now?
Well, right now, we're under Illinois Power, so we don't know. That kind of information just isn't available, not even through confidential documents that have been made available to us. I can say that it's, it is true that Illinois Power has budgeted certain sums of money annually to perform system upgrades and do various kinds of work that they're supposed to do, but just because they've budgeted it doesn't mean they've spent it, and in fact, they have not, certainly not spent all the money that they had supposedly allocated for this. There's, it's not certain whether or not, they would've spent this $6 million anyways, regardless of this agreement. It could well be that they had intended to. Nevertheless, what this agreement really gives us is a process by which we get to have a say in how that money gets spent. The engineering studies get done, we look at what the system needs and where the problems are, and then our consultant, who answers to us, works together with them to determine what the most important priorities are in the repair of the system here locally.
Okay. I have, so you're, you think the $6 million figure is a good figure compared to what we believe hasn't been going on under IP?
Yeah, particularly in light of the fact that it's tied to this audit process. Significantly, in the agreement, there is a commitment over the next five years to complete the work that the audit requires. Now, ultimately, Illinois Power, pardon me, not Illinois Power, Ameren, if the deal goes through, would have say over exactly what gets spent where. But again, because of the process that we've gotten them to commit to, I think it significantly improves our situation, certainly significantly improves the level of knowledge that we have about the system and why there are problems with it.
Okay, and the $6 million is just for the Champaign-Urbana area, just in Illinois?
For the Champaign-Urbana area. And essentially, the thought is that this will be engineering-driven decisions about how to spend that $6 million. The extra $1 million per year is, has a little bit more of a discretionary component for the cities, and although it's considered to be essentially engineering-driven as well, there is more leeway for the city to say, well, this is something that matters more to us here than maybe it might somewhere else, or give us more judgment to exercise.
I have, I'm sorry, one final question. Under the agreement, page 4, item number 3, or F3, it says Ameren IP agrees to expend a maximum of $1 million in each of 2005 and 2006, and I'm wondering, sure doesn't look like there's a minimum figure there, and how concerned are you, and how concerned should we be, that there's no minimum figure?
Let's have a look at the example.
Page, yeah, it's page 4, right above Item G, previously identified concerns, looking at number 3, first sentence.
I don't feel uncomfortable with it, you know, because again, it's tied to the audit process and tied to the work, where they're working jointly with our engineers.
Do you know why they...
The fact is, the fact is, I think, my guess is, in the long run, they'll spend more than this because, again, the commitment is for this stuff to be taken care of completely over five years.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Other questions? One item that is in that part that Ms. Wyman just mentioned is a change in philosophy between the two companies, and it's the very last where that $1 million may include undergrounding existing facilities, as addressed in Section B2. Illinois Power has, for years, insisted that they are an above-ground power distribution company, or the distribution portion is above-ground, and this is an acknowledgement by Ameren that it is a desire of Champaign-Urbana to investigate some undergrounding of the distribution system for electricity. Now, obviously, we can't do it all at once. It's cost prohibitive, but at least this is a significant change in philosophy of our power company if Ameren is successful in buying IP. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, I have a, I have the similar concerns as Ms. Wyman stated with the self-audit. I think that this is, although I think that you actually bring to us a better package than I anticipated, so on one hand, I think there are pieces of this that are great. On the other hand, I think the industry standard seems to be, you know, we don't want anyone auditing our basics, you know, we want to audit ourselves and we want to be able to control the information that goes to the city, and of course, I don't trust that. I just, I do think that you have tried to put controls on, or guidelines on what they should be looking for and what they need to demonstrate, and I guess, you know, there's a chance that they would have to tell the truth in certain instances on the details of this, but I do have that concern. The second is a question, which is the confidentiality issue. What if, in my understanding, in this agreement, I believe, let's see, page 2 of the agreement, about halfway down, number 7, let's see, the, Ameren will share the findings of the audit with the cities, at which point, there will be a confidentiality agreement. I understand, you know, perhaps concerns of homeland security, but other concerns like safety are, I guess, things that I'm concerned about. How could, how can a city, or would we, here's my question, would we sign a confidentiality agreement about something that might be a health and safety issue that I think we have the responsibility to inform our constituents of?
Well, you'll see that the language of this was carefully crafted to address exactly that concern. The proposal we initially got from Ameren was to, was a requirement that we would sign on a confidentiality agreement that they would lay in front of us. We refused to do that, very much because of those kinds of concerns, because we have, we recognize that we have the obligation to answer to the citizens at large and to the constituents here, and that it's hard to do that when you can't tell them what's behind your reasoning. So we asked them, well, really, what is your concern? And they said, well, basically, it's homeland security type of stuff. And so we said, well, fine, we'll sign an agreement that protects homeland security type of information, and we all have a pretty good idea of what that is. In fact, there's a Freedom of Information Act exemption that specifically addresses homeland security types of concerns. That was an exemption that was put in FOIA, oh, I think, within the last six, 12 months. And if anybody wants any additional exceptions, any additional requirements that remain confidential, it would have to be agreed to by both parties. So it's not enough for Ameren to say, well, we think you should also hold this secret because we're afraid that somebody will find out about it and sue us because, you know, it could harm children or something. Well, we won't sign off on that, and there's nothing in that language that would require us to sign off on it. So we sign off on homeland security stuff, and otherwise, we will sign off on only what we agree to sign off.
That's acceptable.
Any other questions? Not a motion would be in order?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Wyman?
Just one short thing. I think this, as other council members have said, this is a good settlement offer. I think that it also, as I understand it, doesn't preclude the city sometime in the future from looking at our own, having, establishing our own municipal utility service, similar to Rantool, and similar to that, which some people of Champaign-Urbana have been talking with us about. But in the meantime, or if that doesn't occur, I think this is a good settlement, and I certainly support it.
That point's correct. It does not preclude us from any time in the future looking at municipalization of the system, nor does it preclude us from taking actions such as aggregation of customers to purchase power. None of those things are precluded by this agreement.
Any other discussion? Discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes. And next, we have 600 new business and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois, provisions to various sections of the Urbana zoning, as they pertain to the requirements of the M.O.R. district, Plan Case Number 1897-T-04. And we've got Mr. Kowalski and Ms. Okte to present to us. They've been doing an awful lot of work on this over the last several months, and so we look forward to the presentation.
Great, thank you. I want to give a little bit of background about the materials tonight and the process. Some of it you already know, but might be beneficial for reviewers and people in the audience. Michaela is gonna go through the guidelines briefly. We're not gonna do a PowerPoint or anything like that, but she's gonna go through the main components of the guidelines, and then we'll take questions. You'll recall in July of 2003, council passed a four-month moratorium on development in the M.O.R. zoning district, and the two primary goals for that moratorium were to, number one, revamp the Development Review Board, which was an all-staff board at that time, and consider a board that'd be more consistent with some of our other boards and commissions and have it a citizen and resident type of board. And then, but number two, also consider the development of some design guidelines for the district. The way the ordinance was set up before then was design was not to be considered, or any kind of aesthetics were not allowed to be considered for the district. I think we quickly learned that four months to do a major text amendment and also develop design guidelines was probably a bit ambitious. So at the end of the moratorium, we had a pretty good text amendment revamping the DRB, and then we said we'd be coming back later with design guidelines. In the interim, we passed, you passed a set of design criteria, I think there was about 23 or 24 different individually-listed design criteria as a stop-gap measure to make sure something was in the new ordinance. That was in November of 2003. So over the past nine months, we have been working, Michaela mostly has been working very hard on putting together these design guidelines, and they have been reviewed twice by the Historic Preservation Commission for their input, I believe three times by the Urbana Plan Commission, who has had a lot of their input. And then we also had an open house at Lincoln Square a few months ago where we invited everybody who lives in the district or in the area to come by and take a look at the proposals. So we've reached a point today where we have, for your consideration tonight, another final text amendment to the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the M.O.R. district. It makes just a couple tweaks from what we approved back in November of 2003, but then also replaces the section that addresses design guidelines. It eliminates the list of 23 or 24 guidelines that was passed in November 2003, and it instead references this new design guideline booklet to be used by the Development Review Board. Then again, as I mentioned, there's a couple other tweaks in there also, and then there is the provision to eliminate the section that prohibits parking underneath the structure, and those are addressed in the guidelines. Again, Michaela's gonna go through the guidelines themselves, but I did want to take the opportunity to clarify a little bit how the guidelines are gonna be used and administered, and that's been a little bit of confusion over the past couple weeks. The guidelines are not simply recommendations given to developers for them to decide if they want to use or not. Any new construction or significant exterior remodeling must demonstrate consistency with the guidelines, and the way that this consistency is demonstrated is through approval by the Development Review Board. And again, this is a seven-member board that is, will be appointed probably tonight and approved by council, and they are to review these proposals and then decide if the proposals meet the consistency, you know, are generally consistent with the guidelines or not. Within the design guidelines themselves, there is flexibility for the Development Review Board. Some design elements are more strongly encouraged than others or discouraged, and there is flexibility built in there for the review board that staff and the Plan Commission felt that is necessary, considering the different circumstances that proposals will have within the district, depending on its location or the type of architecture it's proposing or who's right next door. It was felt it was important to have a little bit of flexibility over, you know, exactly what kind of windows need to be used or where a balcony... what kind of windows need to be used or where a balcony may or may not be important. So, that's really the nexus of why we wanted to have the system of strongly encouraged down to strongly discouraged within the guidelines. But again, compliance with the guidelines is not an option and that's required through the Development Review Board. I love Curtis Pettyjohn's analogy. He always has one when he presents. I think in the case of the guard dog that's been loose without the teeth, the guard dog is really the D R B and we think through the text amendment to the zoning ordinance and these guidelines that they have the teeth that they would need. Okay, I'm going to stop there and let Michaela go through the book.
Thank you. Included in your packet is the M O R design guideline booklet that's referenced in the text amendment. There are really about five sections to this booklet. First of all, there's an introduction that speaks to the design guidelines where they apply to some general brief information. It also provides a background of the M O R mixed-office residential history, where it came from, how it's evolved in the past decade or so. The third portion gives a brief introduction about what the Development Review Board is, what their job is, what that board comprises of. And I guess the meat of this booklet would be the nine design guideline topics, which I'd like to summarize briefly. I'll start on page seven with the facade zone. And really, the primary purpose of this section is to set up for the D R B to identify the facade zone or the important characteristics of the site, what's seen from the street, on the building and on the site, so any features on the site, that those being, you know, quite important when going through this booklet and through these sections. Building orientation on page eight. The main purpose of this section is to talk about different patterns on the block for the D R B to understand that there are predominant patterns on each block, it being unique. And hopefully, that a building being placed on a site would be compatible with the patterns on that block and how it relates to adjacent properties. On page nine, there's the massing and scale section, which speaks to the bulk of a structure and how a structure can use architectural features to break up the mass and make it more compatible, that sometimes, it's not how big a structure is, but how it's designed from the street that really allows it to blend in with other properties on the block and how important that is. Page 10, openings. This section speaks to the importance of windows and doors on a structure, even though that may be basic knowledge sometimes, that doesn't happen. So, it encourages adequate amount of openings, obviously, and openings that respect architectural style of whatever building would be proposed or changes that may be proposed and also talks about rhythms being important for openings, windows and doors on a structure. Page 11 identifies outdoor living spaces, balconies, porches or patios. It gives a brief definition of what we think of when we think of outdoor living space. It speaks to how important front porches and balconies would be in the facade zone on buildings within the M O R district. On page 12, the materials section, there aren't necessarily any mandates on specific materials, but this section really does give examples of different sort of exterior sightings or materials used in the M O R. There are various materials used. This section really speaks to quality and durability being important for exterior siding or materials. The parking area section, the main point here is to, although a parking area is obviously an important feature on a site, how it's designed and where it's positioned is where we wanted to speak to, really softening the visual impact of parking areas or parking garages to house vehicles on a site. On page 14, we tried our best to identify parking under a principal structure, some examples, local examples that may be better than other examples that are found locally in our community of rear-loaded parking for single-family structures or even in multi-family structures where parking in the rear of a lot isn't visible from the facade zone and, you know, does reduce visual impact of vehicles and really makes parking areas in the M O R more compatible with other structures and with the character of the district. On page 15, there's the landscaping section, which is also very important for the Green Street corridor and Elm Street corridors. So, we thought this was a very important section to include in the design guidelines, that landscaping is an important design element as well as preserving mature trees and really touching on the visual interest of properties and how landscaping can really replenish the urban canopy, but also help any new structures fit in within the M O R district. And last but not least, the commercial site design section. We wanted to, excuse me, have just one section that really hit on some commercial site design features that we thought were important as far as adaptive reuse of existing buildings is a very important part of the M O R intent and really the purpose of this district, that new structures would have a residential design and fit in with the M O R. We hit on some guidelines there that the commissions thought were important. And the last part of the booklet really is a photo inventory from July 2004 to help the Development Review Board make their decisions. And we'll take any questions. Talk about this booklet.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Just want to verify something as I read through this. It's my understanding that the ordinance is mandatory, the design guidelines are certainly strong, you have, it has to get through the Development Review Board and there's certain guidelines, and that a developer who does not necessarily agree with or like the outcome of the Development Review Board has the right to appeal that to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Zoning Board of Appeals decision is final and doesn't, it does not go anywhere after that. It's, if, is that correct?
Well, it doesn't go anywhere within the city. They have the right to take it to court.
Okay. So, basically, if the Development Review Board's decision is upheld, then they could choose to drop it or take it to court and if the Development Review Board's decision is not upheld, then that's a final decision.
That's correct. And that'd be consistent with, say, conditional use permits that are heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals and if they deny something and a developer wants to appeal that, that would be the same process. But that process of appealing a decision of the D R B was carried over from the way the regulations were written for the past nine years or so. It wasn't a change we made.
Was it carryover, oh, carryover of how the, because there hasn't been a Development Review Board, so basically, a council decision?
No, well, there was a Development Review Board, except it was five staff members.
Oh, staff.
And so, if they denied a project and a developer wanted to appeal that, their recourse was the Zoning Board.
Got it.
Questions for staff? Out of motion would be in order?
Move approval?
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion?
Oh, I was going to move to delete Section 2 of the ordinance that's referencing the parking issue. Second.
So, exactly what is the nature of your motion then?
If you look at, it's the second to last page of the ordinance actually, and there's a strike through in the, the information we got from staff, Section 2, Section 8-3J, period, location of parking facilities is hereby deleted and they delete, and then it is as a strike through, parking located at ground level below any principal structure shall be prohibited in the M O R district, parking located underground below a principal structure shall be allowed in the M O R district in accordance with the provisions of Article 8 of this ordinance. So, my motion is to take this out, that is, and the effect of that, if it passes, would be then to prohibit parking located at ground level below any principal structure. And, sorry? Oh, okay. So, it would, it basically takes, it puts back in what we've had before up to this point. Does that make sense?
Okay, so what, what you want to do is take out the strikeout?
Correct.
And retain that part that was, that has the strike through. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it, yes, it prohibits parking underground, under the principal structure in the M O R district. That's what my motion is and that's what was seconded.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we all understand what the motion is?
Does that make sense?
I have one clarification from staff. I think there's an error in this document that was prepared for us because there are two sentences here in strike through and one of them is not currently part of the ordinance. The ordinance says parking located at ground level below any principal structure shall be prohibited in the M O R district. That second sentence was one that was proposed by the staff and it was rejected last November and I don't know why, because the two sentences contradict each other.
That's correct, yeah.
And so, if we were to delete Section 2 of the ordinance, as this motion requires that what the ordinance would be left saying would be Section 8-3J, parking located at ground level below a principal structure shall be prohibited in the M O R district, period. And that's the way the law is right now. So, those other words just didn't need to be stripped because they're already not there, right? Is that correct, Mr. Plasky? Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Chenoweth?
I just have a clarifying question. The prohibition on parking under a principal structure, does that refer only to new construction in this case, or would it also refer to, say, somebody wants to build on top of their existing parking garage, an apartment?
It, the garage is existing and they want to build on top of it?
Yeah.
I think that would be interpreted as not being permitted.
That would not be permitted?
Right.
Well, are you talking about a parking deck or?
No, I'm speaking of a parking garage that may or may not be attached to a house and whether or not Ms. Wyman's motion would prohibit.
The garage, it's not the principal structure on the lot.
Exactly.
Right.
Not the principal structure.
If it's not the principal structure, then that's, well, it's a little tricky. If you have a house and an accessory garage on the lot and you propose to build a dwelling unit above the garage, which is the case at 102 or 103 West Florida or East Florida, we looked at that as a second principal use on the lot and required Zoning Board approval to do that. So, we hadn't thought through that scenario, but I guess in past practice has been to consider that a second principal use on the lot.
So, it would, so if, for example, the majority of us said yes to this, to this, you know, prohibition of parking, which is maintaining the prohibition on parking, then that would mean that a second story on top of an accessory garage would be or would not be permitted?
I would say it would not be.
It would be what?
It would not be.
It would not be.
Permitted.
Okay. All right.
Question, Ms. Pat?
Thank you. The, in the M O R district, since its creation in 1991, parking located at the ground level below a principal structure has been prohibited. Last November, the staff proposed to us that we delete that prohibition and this council rejected that proposal. The proposal's before us again tonight and I would encourage folks to again reject that proposal. There are three reasons that I think parking located on the ground level is not a good idea in the M O R district. The first was the primary reason that it was included in the original creation of the M O R district and that is that the purpose of the M O R district is to promote adaptive reuse or new construction that is compatible with the residential character of the M O R area and the older structures that are in that area. And those older structures do not have parking beneath the building or ground, the first floor parking with apartments built above that. I don't see how we can allow parking below a principal structure in that area and achieve the compatibility requirement. We were originally, or the plan commission was originally presented with a photograph of what was thought by our professional staff to be compatible and it was a building where the front entrance was almost six feet above the sidewalk. Everyone on the plan commission agreed that that was not really appropriate and so that picture was thrown out. And the pictures you see in the pamphlets that we were given for tonight's meeting are of buildings that have a small amount of a parking garage behind the building, which is not the same thing as parking located at the ground level, particularly if there are no design guidelines and even what we, what in past discussions, I think we've all agreed would be completely unacceptable is only listed as strongly not recommended rather than prohibited in the design guidelines. I think that allowing this parking is just an invitation for new construction that is not compatible with the existing properties in the district and therefore, it totally undermines the purpose of the M O R district. The second reason that I don't think parking at ground level is a good idea is because it eliminates accessible apartments. There are not very many accessible apartments in this community for a variety of reasons, including past actions or inaction by the Urbana city government. We have this one area where the opportunity for more accessible apartments being included in new construction exists because of the standards that were set for the M O R district in 1991. I don't believe the motivation at the time was to create more apartments that are accessible to people who use wheelchairs, but a good benefit of that requirement has been for the creation of apartments that are accessible. And it's, we're not talking about a great number of apartments either way, but it pretty much is a difference between whether a new building has two accessible rental units or four or six. And I would much prefer that we have a policy that is promoting accessibility rather than allowing the accessibility requirements to be compromised down to the bare minimum. The third reason is, and this is something I brought up with the plan commission, asking what is, why would we want to do this? How is the health, welfare or safety of the people of Urbana promoted by allowing the ground-level parking in new construction in the M O R district? And the only answer I was given as to why this would be good would be to increase density. Now, the density increase would be of no significance as far as helping the tax base for the school district and we're really talking about the difference in a lot of cases between whether we have an eight-unit apartment building or a 10-unit apartment building. But considering that the changes to the M O R district were brought about by the administration in response to a petition from the people in the neighborhood asking for a reduction in density, I find it unsettling that the response we've gotten is a crafty way to slightly increase density. If we delete Section 2 and we maintain the status quo, which has been the law for 13 years, we will hopefully see continued development in the M O R district that is consistent or somewhat compatible with the existing structures. And the whole difference as far as density and accessibility may be a matter of having an eight-unit building with four wheelchair-accessible apartments versus a 10-unit building with two wheelchair-accessible apartments. I don't see that the gain to the public, if any, of having 10 apartments instead of eight outweighs the loss to the public of having only two accessible apartments instead of four or the loss to the neighboring areas of having increased density that puts greater pressure on a neighbor that already is not able to bear the burden of parking that has resulted from the new development that has been in that area. So, I encourage support for this amendment to the main motion to delete Section 2. So I encourage support for this amendment to the main motion to delete Section 2 from the ordinance that is under consideration tonight. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Just briefly, I must say that my, the main motivation I have in deleting this parking issue comes out of the concern that I think this entire council shares on issues regarding accessibility for people with disabilities. We already know that there is a shortage of housing available for people with disabilities, and as the statistics tell us, one in five people will become disabled at some point, physically disabled at some point in their life. I think it's important that because of the shortage nationwide, as well as in our community, for accessible housing, that, that we not create laws to reduce the number of potential homes that are accessible for people with disabilities. The other issue, of course, is the compatibility, and that's been brought up by, by Ms. Pat, I think by Mr. Ross, who, who lives next to a new structure for, or two new structures in the MOR district. The third issue I think that is important in this is, and this is important, I think, in the entire MOR discussion, is, goes back to an issue we discussed two weeks ago, I believe it was, in considering whether to allow a house, I believe it was at 505 South Urbana, over in Ms. Housward, allowing, seeing whether that, that structure, that house could be torn down in order to have, to put in for apartments. And something that Ms. Chenoweth said, and I think was repeated in an email thanking us for our vote, was that we don't want to contribute or to allow, to give an incentive to allow houses or structures to be run down, or to be allowed to be run down, in order to just get a council approval for, to, to allow a place to be torn down, or demolished, and turned into an apartment building. And I think that the adaptive reuse issue then is important in this issue as well. If we allow parking underneath the principal structure, I am concerned that that, that will create an incentive for not the reuse of the structure, but instead doing what happened, what appears to have happened at Kohler and Green Street on the west side, southwest side, where we now have an empty lot, and that is to just allow the house to be run, become run down, not do the necessary changes, necessary fix-ups, and then just allow it to become so bad that, of course, it has to be demolished. And I think that, again, taking this issue out, taking out the possibility of putting in parking at the ground level where, underneath a principal structure where I don't believe it exists anywhere in the current MOR district, I think taking this out would take away that incentive for allowing a property to be run down just for the economic incentive of putting parking on the first floor. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Whelan?
I know someone who has a house that's accessible to the handicap, and has not had, and it's for rent, and has not had one application yet from a handicap person. That is not to say that there are benefits to having wider use of availability for people with handicaps, particularly in, who need accessibility to wheelchairs. But I think sometimes, I think we're overplaying this, and I can't agree.
Discussion? Just a couple of questions. So, Mr. Kowalski, you were saying if, if this amendment is approved, then an apartment or living unit above a garage that is not currently a principal structure on the lot would not be allowed, is that right?
Yeah, once a dwelling unit is added on top of a detached garage, we consider that a second principal structure on the lot, so.
And this is a, that is a scenario that could come up in this MOR, is that right? In fact, we've already had a, somebody that's interested in constructing a garage with a living unit above that in a way that's compatible with a historic home, is that right?
Yeah, if it's not a living unit, if it's not a dwelling unit where somebody's going to live there separate from the house, then we would still consider that accessory to the main house. But if it's going to be a dwelling unit on top of a detached.
So if it's a separate dwelling unit, then it's a principal use. If it's auxiliary to the prince, the, the main residence, if it's, say, an art studio or something of that nature, or a playroom for the kids, then that's going to be okay. But if it's a self-contained living unit, then that's a, with a kitchen and bathroom and so forth, then that's a different matter, is that right?
Right.
I see, so that's a difference there. So. Chenoweth?
Just a follow-up question to the mayor's. Would a person who would like to do something like that scenario be able to request a variance? Or is this something that is not, is prohibited outright, and, and variances on it are not heard?
Yeah, it's not really a variable item such as a five-foot setback, or a 35-foot height limit. Now, I suppose an appeal of the requirements of the zoning ordinance could be presented to the zoning board. I wouldn't say how, wouldn't want to speculate how successful that would be, but it's really not a variable issue.
Would, would this, would the city be able to distinguish between, not necessarily with this language, but additional language, be able to distinguish between an existing structure and a new structure? So would they be, would we be able to say, for example, under, with existing, to encourage adaptive reuse of structures, with an existing structure, a development above an existing parking garage would be acceptable, but under new construction, something like that would not be acceptable? So that's something that, a distinction we could legally make?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, the ordinance is set up that gives other allowances for projects that are adaptive reuse. I don't, Steve's not here, but I don't think that's a stretch to allow it in an adaptive reuse project, or where there's an existing, you know, accessory structure. It could be set up that way, I suppose.
Okay.
Are questions? Okay, if not, a, the vote would be in order. All those in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue of hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Or opposed? It's two. Motion carries. Back to discussion on the main motion. Ms. Chenoweth?
I'd like to make an amendment, which is, if council members will look at the memo that I passed out earlier, this is actually a revision of a memo that Ms. Pat has been And the section, actually, if you look at, at Section 3 and below, so the second, the bottom two-thirds of that, of the memo, basically, the proposal is to change "Design Guidelines Review." Actually, I don't know if I got a copy of this.
They just got one.
Okay. To change the paragraph below that and replace it with "Design Guidelines Review: The Development Review Board shall evaluate the design of any proposed new development to determine compatibility with the residential character of the neighborhood," that's Ms. Pat's language, "and with the MOR Mixed Office Residential Zoning District Design Guidelines." A compat, a com, it should be compatible, not compatible. "Structures shall, one, have a main entrance on the street side of the building. If a lot has more than one street frontage, then the main entrance shall be on the more major frontage. And, two, have windows facing each street frontage that are a minimum of 25% of the wall face." And then it ends, and this is again, I think, the initial language, it hasn't been changed, "But MOR Guidelines shall be adopted under separate ordinance, shall be housed at the City of Urbana C, Community Development Services Department, and that the proposed amendments shall be considered by the Plan Commission in the form of a public hearing, et cetera." This is, that actually is, there are no additions or changes to, to what was in the packet. So that is the motion.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Ms. Chenoweth, so it was exactly as.
Exactly as written.
Written here in the bold.
Yes, in the, in the bottom third, all the underlying portions would be, would replace Section 3J of what we received in our packets.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I've got a, on that item two there, I've got a question for staff, and it says, "Have windows facing each street frontage that are a minimum of 25% of the wall face." And I don't have a problem with the concept, but I know that 25% of the wall face, when you start adding it up, is a large proportion of the wall face. A criteria that I don't believe many of the homes that are in the MOR would meet right now. And so if you take a look at some of the pictures, I'm looking at 408 West Green, 406 West Green, that are existing older homes, the windows that are facing the street probably amount to a fraction, probably, you know, closer to 15% of the wall face rather than 25. And when you think about it architecturally, 25% is a huge amount of window space. And when you talk about the separation between the, the space between the roof line and the windows, and the bottom of the windows to the base, to the foundation and so forth, 25% is a huge amount of wall face. And I don't know, Ms. Chenoweth, if that's where that number came from, but I, I think if we're making it a requirement that every house in the MOR ought to comply with it currently, and I don't think that's the case. Ms. Chenoweth?
I can answer your question, which is where it came from is actually the existing ordinance. It came from the, in the existing ordinance, which has been in effect, if you look at, and I have just far too many pieces of paper in front of me right now, page 10 of the, of the, of the ordinance that's before us tonight, you'll see a number of strikeouts, and it's actually kind of the last page of the ordinance that's before us. If you turn, turn it all the way over, you'll see.
Excuse me, it's the last page of the memo just prior to the ordinance.
Memo, oh, that's correct, the memo prior to the ordinance, so page 10. It is quoting from the ordinance, and in that, in the ordinance, "Design Guidelines Review, Number 5, Letter J, says, 'A minimum of 25% and a maximum of 60% of wall face to be windows.'" So the 25% came from that. Now, I think staff would need to ask where that, or need to answer where, where that particular language came from, but that has been, but that has been in, in effect since we last looked at this issue.
Well, I know that that, those were added at the last minute. Staff had, at the time, requested we just leave that as a holding place for the guidelines. Council wanted to have something in there until we got the guidelines, and so it was just a last-minute addition by council. Where that 25% came from, I don't know, but it, I don't believe it came from staff.
There was a list that the Historic Preservation Commission had put together as a general recommendation for what to consider with design guidelines. For the most part, that list was used for that 23 design criteria, but the mayor's correct, on the floor, there was a lot of revision, and I, I don't recall if those percentages were originally on that Historic Preservation list, or if that was something that was added by council. But I can't, I can't say it isn't, it isn't anything that staff has done any kind of research or survey on to find out roughly what percentage of wall faces are covered with window in the MOR, or anything like that.
Yeah, well, I can do just a visual. I mean, there are a number of these houses that do not meet that criteria right now, and I think it would be a mistake to have a percentage that high in there. Correct percentage would be, I don't know, but that is a large, that's a high percentage. Yes, Mr. Whelan?
You know, that uncertainty can arise because of committees designing buildings. I think in anything like this, it's a wise, a good idea for staff to review this thoroughly, and I would propose to table this presently and move it to our next committee meeting, so that the staff will have a time, a chance to look at this, and, and come back with a better understanding of the problem. So I make the motion to move this to committee meeting next.
Second.
Your motion is to send this to committee next week?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Could I, I don't know if I'll get a friendly amendment out of this, but as a friendly amendment, I'd like to ask Mr. Whelan to consider adding two things to your motion. Number one is to specifically state that we would like staff to come back with language to address adaptive reuse of existing parking structures that would allow for building on top of existing parking structures, so to propose some kind of language to address that. And then number two would be for them to come back with a recommendation about, because I believe there is a consensus that we need to have windows that face street frontages, and that's not taken care of as a, an obligation in the, in the design guidelines, to come back with a recommendation for a, a requirement that would go in the ordinance, that would stipulate a certain amount of window edge, so to speak. So those would be the two, so we give them a little bit more specific direction on those two items.
That's very wise, and I think it's, reflects the debate tonight. I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Just a clarification. It seemed like Mr. Whelan had a question, or maybe other members of the council had a question as to where the 25% issue of, of window frontage came from. If, if you recall the November 13, 2003 letter that was in your packets, well, back in November, when we addressed this issue, sent by Ms. Pat and I, on the suggestions, there was Item K, a minimum of 25%, and a maximum of 60% of wall face to be windows. So that, that wasn't something that was amended on the floor, though Mr. Kowalski's correct that we did have a lot of discussion and changes on the floor. And I believe that, that the proposals that we put in the packet in that letter were from the Historic Preservation Commission, or Historic Preservation packets that discussed these issues. So I don't know if that was indeed a question that you all had, or if I'm just dwelling on detail, but to the extent that answers that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Regardless of where the 25% came from, I don't believe it's consistent with existing buildings that are in the MOR, and I would hate to see that as a required guideline when many of the buildings in the MOR would currently be non-compliant.
I'd like to withdraw my motion. Not the motion to table, but the, or to send to committee, but the initial motion that I made, just so it's clear what motions are on the table and what aren't.
Point of order. The motion to table was to table that motion. The motion of post-hold considerations, post-hold consideration of the main motion and the area.
Right.
And the motion to amend, so we have to act on that first.
Yep.
So if anyone else withdraws anything, you have to kill Mr. Whelan's motion.
It's Mr. Whelan's motion. So you can't withdraw Mr. Whelan's motion.
I believe there's a, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
For the, for the entire package, and then there's a motion on the floor for the amendment.
And there's a motion to send it to committee, send the whole thing to committee.
Okay.
And what we're discussing right now is the motion to send it to committee.
Okay, yes.
So if it's the council's desire, we can do that. I, I don't think we're all that far from getting this done right now, but if you'd like to send it to committee, that's fine. Anybody, any further discussion on the motion to send it to committee? If there's no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we'll see that next week then. Next is the guidelines themselves. Let's see, where are we on this? An ordinance approving design guidelines, the MOR Mixed Office Residential Zoning District Design Guidelines, Plan Case Number 1897-T-04. Was there any further? Was there any further presentation on those, or the presentation included that? And I don't know if you want to move and discuss these at this point. Ms. Chenoweth?
I move, oh, I, we're speaking of the design guidelines, if I could-
Yes.
Never mind, I'm on to the next thing already. Thought we were done with MOR, but-
Ms. Pat?
I move to send this ordinance to committee with the previous ordinance, because the, one is dependent upon the other.
Second.
I was just wondering if you want to discuss any potential changes here, or so that we can be more prepared for next week? Does anybody have?
Without acting on the first one, we don't know all the potential changes we would want to make, because-
Well, but there may be some changes we want to make regardless.
All right, that could be, sure.
Is there any input that council can help to give to staff to make next week more productive regarding the guidelines? Wyman?
I think one of the things that I'll, I'll be suggesting, at least at the next meeting, to give council members and staff a heads-up, is in the proposals on the design, design guidelines, is that all of the items that are strongly recommended or strongly discouraged, page, on pages seven through 14, that is, all but the landscaping and commercial, be put into not, be changed to not just strongly encouraged or strongly discouraged, but prohibited. And I'd be happy to, to put in council members' packets, language to that effect. But if, if the mayor is just asking in staff for, for an idea of what we want to do and to give head, staff a heads-up, that's, that's one of the ideas I have. Thank you.
Would you state that again?
Sure. If you look at the packet that, that we went through, and that is actually beautiful design and, and shows a lot of great things that we want to see protected or duplicated in the MOR district, if you look at, starting on page seven, the facade zone, you'll notice that there are items, three bullet points strongly encouraged, one bullet point strongly discouraged. If you look on the following page, page eight, building orientation and patterns, two items strongly encouraged-
I understand that, and what was the nature of your-
The motion that I, I plan to make is that those items that are listed here as strongly encouraged, I will make a motion at the next meeting that those be changed to required. And those items on pages seven through 14 that are listed as strongly discouraged, I will make a motion to, to make those that are prohibited. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Okay.
In informal discussion, I certainly, that's a, a direction that we'd like to go. I, I think the way the staff and the Plan Commission have this laid out with strongly encouraged, encouraged, and so forth, will give the guidance to the Design Review Board, who will have the ability to decide whether the specific site plan and design is compatible with the neighborhood. I think you can, and when you, when you make such requirements, then you take the flexibility away from the Design Review Board. And then you, you, even if all of those things are requirements, and an architect and a builder adhere to all those, you can still have an ugly building that doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. And I, I think that that just sends the wrong message to people that might want to develop in the- Any other guidance for staff, Ms. Pat?
Just following up on that point, I think that, well, first of all, the number one goal here should not be flexibility for the Development Review Board, it should be to accomplish the purpose of the district, and the Development Review Board carries out one function in relation to that. And, and they, but they would not be without purpose, if, if the mayor's point was that if we required, if we had design guidelines, that then they would have no purpose, you know, that's not really true. We have guidelines right now, we have all sorts of guidelines under the zoning ordinance. The purpose of the Development Review Board is to evaluate those things which are not eas, that, well, that are not easily either a mandate or a prohibition, and, and to make some of the judgments that might be subjective. And some of, and if you look at all of these, I, I agree with the general sentiments that Ms. Wyman expressed, although if you go through these page by page, you'll see that some of the, the strongly encouraged guidelines are not subjective and would be easy to mandate, such as main entrance located on the front facade of a building, which was in fact part of Ms. Chenoweth's motion. And one that was not part of Ms. Chenoweth's motion, though I would like to see as a requirement, is the height-to-width ratio of a structure is compatible with that of other structures on the block. That could be a requirement, the Development Review Board will still determine how, how much it has to be, two to one, one to three, whether or not it's appropriate, but the, but the requirement is that there be a height-to-width ratio evaluation, that's something that's not required right now. Some of the others, I mean, there's some things that don't lend themselves as well to requirement, like openings that reflect the building's architectural style. I think that would be a hard thing to mandate, and I think that's better as, as a guideline. Front porches and balconies with roof lines that are compatible with the main roof of the structure, if you just look through some of these, you'll see that, I, I think there's a mix under what, under the strongly encouraged, of points that could be, and appropriately would be mandated, and those which should remain guidelines. So, and I, and I think that our staff could have come up with that, had that been the administration's direction, but since the decision was made after the council voted on this last November to initiate a plan case to get rid of that, I don't think anyone ever looked at that. So if you have the desire to keep some things subjective and evaluated by the Development Review Board, but are willing to concede that there are some things that are easy to mandate and appropriate to do so, between now and the committee meeting, you, the mayor may want to ask the staff to have a look at those strongly, those bullet points under strongly encouraged on each page, and see if there are some that you want to recommend be mandates as opposed to mere guidelines.
Other direction for staff for next week? All right, well, then, if there's no objection, we'll see this next week at the committee meeting. Let's see, Item Eight, under New Businesses and Ordinances Authorizing the Chief Administrative Officer to Execute a Tentative Agreement Regarding the Stratford Project. Mr. Walden?
What you have before you is a little bit unusual, in that it's an agreement to proceed. And the reason that I felt we needed to do this is that we're running out of time on this construction season. We came to agreement on Wednesday, Thursday morning, we have this before you in the packet Thursday afternoon, with, with these assurances, the developer will begin. In two weeks, you'll have before you the final development agreement, although I, although we do have an agreement on the terms of that, so those are outlined. You know, if you look at any development agreement, there's the city obligations and the developer obligations, those are outlined here. So we are going to proceed, and the developer is going to proceed on the assurances that we make tonight, the final agreement will be before you in two weeks for execution. Entertain questions on the development.
Questions? Out of motion would be in order?
Move a second.
Move a motion, a second, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Let's get the hard hats out, I'm ready to dig.
This is a great project.
Yeah, I couldn't be-
Something harder than that.
Yeah, I couldn't, yeah, exactly, the corn's not going to work. I couldn't be more thrilled, I completely applaud the city administration, I've met with Joe Petrie a dozen times on numerous issues, this one being one of them. I applaud both he and Ray Timponi, unfortunately, they're, they're not here to hear it, but I certainly will be giving them a call. The, you know, unlike other communities, like our, like our nearest neighbor, but many communities, they have lots of infrastructure that's in a decayed state in their downtown. We have a small amount of infrastructure, partly thanks to a number of fires that happened in downtown a while ago, and many of the pieces of infrastructure in our downtown, the buildings, are in great shape, because whether people like this or not, there are oftentimes quite a few attorneys who purchase their buildings and keep those buildings in, in very good shape. And I, I think that what we need to do is build, we've needed to build for a long time, we have to build new structures. As a business owner in downtown, and as somebody who is constantly speaking with other businesses and talking to them about the benefits of downtown Urbana, one of the things that I have found as a recruiter for downtown, is that they can't find spaces for what they want to do. There's, there are tech companies, there are cafes, there are all kinds of groups that I've spoken to, I know our staff has spoken to, where they need lots of different kinds of spaces in which to, to start their businesses, grow their businesses, expand, et cetera. The city has some things, there's a few things in disrepair that are available, otherwise it's very limited in terms of the kinds of spaces, so we absolutely need to do something like this. And we, I know that we talk about a lack of business in our downtown, and I think the piece that, that has been missing in that conversation publicly at least, I think the city has talked about it, is that we have to build new to do that. So I think that this is a local developer, I know we were looking at a Chicago development before, I think that's great, I think we need a local developer who knows the heart and soul of our community, is in, in touch with that, and I think that every piece of this proposal that I've seen so far is right. It's mixed use, it's large scale, it's adding significantly, possibly in the 80 to 90 houses of accessible housing, which is something that we've had in a, kind of our long-term vision for a while, and haven't been able to make that happen. And so I say, go for it.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Whalen?
What Ms. Chenoweth has said, I think it's wonderful that these local, these guys are doing this, but I also would compliment our staff, our mayor, and our chief administrative officer, for bringing this to fruition and aiding and assisting in it. It's, it takes a great team, and the council. Oh, that's wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, Ms. Huth?
Just to say, I fully support this project, I've been asked on numerous occasions, what's going to be going up on that site over the years, so I'm glad to be able to, to talk about this exciting project, and I also know there's a demand for housing in and around the downtown area, and I'm looking forward to being able to meet that demand and start to bring more people living here.
Okay, any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson's Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Huth?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Sattifway?
Yes. That motion carries with seven ayes. Next, let's see if I can find-
Appointment of Assistant Chief.
Right, no, I've got it. The appointment of Assistant Police Chief, it's my pleasure to submit to you the appointment of Mike Beely to the position of Assistant Chief of Police. Mr. Beely has 22 years of progressive law enforcement experience, including nine years of proven leadership as an Urbana lieutenant. He's, well, you can see on his resume and paragraph here, he's got a lot of managerial, technical, personal skills, has a Bachelor of Science degree in law enforcement administration from Western Illinois University, 2,200 hours of law enforcement training. Well, I've worked with Mr. Beely the entire time I've been there, and think very highly of him, and so very happy to submit his name to you for confirmation to, as Assistant Chief of Police. So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Whalen?
Just to say that I think that Officer Beely, Assistant Chief Beely, is a fine officer in our, on our staff, we can be very proud of his professionalism, I've seen him in service, and I'm very happy to see to your wishes of appointment.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And finally, tonight, appointments to the Design Review Board, we've been talking about the Design Review Board for much of the night, and it was mentioned that one of the two major changes was the makeup of the board itself, from five staff members, with a unanimous vote required from those five staff members to a seven-member board, whose members are detailed, or that the requirements are detailed in the zoning ordinance. And that, any design needs to, that was reviewed by the Design Review Board requires a two-thirds majority vote for approval, so that's five out of the seven members. I'm pleased to present to you six of the seven spots on the Design Review Board. The seventh is not on your list, but she has accepted, and I'll present that to you at the next council meeting. She is in the audience right now, Betsy Cronin, Betsy, you'll raise your hand, so council members know who you are, and she would be the final, if she's approved, the final member of the DRB, filling the resident or resident within 250 feet of the DRB. So I'll present these six who have agreed to serve, Art Zangrell, 702 West Oregon, and he would be the representative from the Historic Preservation Commission, Lori Gosha, 612 West Iowa, she would be the representative from the Plan Commission, Jennifer Gentry, 2104 South Vine Street. Ms. Gentry is a partner in Better Image Digital Photo Lab, she's Chief Financial Officer at Squad Fitters in Urbana, is a tax accountant, and also owns and manages apartment buildings in Urbana, one of which is on Green Street in the MOR. And she would be the small business representative on the DRB. Christopher Hartman of 905 South McKinley in Champaign, Mr. Hartman is a real estate developer with JSM Development. He received his industrial and manufacturing Bachelor's of Engineering from Northwestern in 1999. He is, as I said, with JSM, who just recently had an open house at the Gregory Place Building on campus. He would be the developer representative on the DRB. Fifth is Mr. Brian Adams of 412 West Elm. Mr. Adams is an archaeologist at the University of Illinois, received his bachelor's and master's degree from the U of I Chicago, and his PhD from the U of I in Urbana-Champaign, and he would be the MOR resident representative on the DRB. And Brian has made it through the entire meeting tonight, and is in the back row there.
He's a commitment.
Right, a show of his commitment. Sixth is Michael McCully, 2354A County Road, 1100 East in Champaign. Mr. McCully is an architect whose present occupation is Associate Dean in the College of Fine and Applied Arts at the U of I. He's acted in many professional organizations, including State of Illinois Architecture Licensing Board. He was part of the MOR Committee several years ago, and also owns a house, which I was not aware of, until after he accepted his appointment, he owns a house on Elm Street in the MOR. And he would be the architect representative on the DRB. And so it's my pleasure to present those six to you this evening, and as I said, I'll have Betsy Cronin's name before you at the next council meeting. I'll answer any questions at this point? No questions, motion would be in order?
Move approval?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Pat?
Just two little corrections, it, the name of the body in the ordinance is actually Development Review Board, even though their goal is to evaluate designs, excuse me, and Mr. Zangrell lives on Michigan, not on Oregon, which you know since you-
Yeah, I must have been thinking of my own home there. Yeah, sorry about that, a little typo. Okay, yes, Ms. Wyman?
I just wanted to point out, I don't know if other council members had, had thought about this, because we had also been working with the Ethics Ordinance, and last week talked about conflicts of interest, I asked Mr. Holtz before the meeting if the fact that some members of the Development Review Board lived in the district and obviously would be affected or feel affected by changes, if that would create any sort of conflict of interest, and he said that, no, the, the fact that members of the Development Review Board either live in the district, own, or own property in the district, would not create by them voting on any of these things, any conflict of interest that would violate the proposed ordinance.
In that in and of itself, I mean, there may be- In that in and of itself, I mean, there may be conflicts of interest otherwise, but-
Right.
Not exempt from conflicts of interest, but this doesn't necessarily create a conflict of interest.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And there be no further business to come before us?